All right, please stand and join us for the pledge.
Say Mark, when we're done with the pledge, you gotta take the flag down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll call now the regular school board meeting of independent school districts at 5:44 to order, and the first item of business will be to establish our form. So Acting Clerk Matt Lemke, will you take that?
Sure. Ms. Mariece?
Present.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yep.
Steve Vigasa?
Here.
Melanie Coe?
Here.
Matt Lemke here. We do have a corner.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the agenda? There were a couple of, it was the original agenda and then a couple of additions, but all emailed prior to the meeting tonight, so all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, the agenda is approved. We'd like to take some time for acknowledgements, and we'd like to congratulate Cheryl Mormon for being selected West Central School Counselors Association 2018 School Counselor of the Year. Cheryl works in our IQ cabinet. And then I would also express appreciation to an anonymous donor. The school district will be receiving a $50,000 anonymous donation to enhance the tennis program with 11 benches for the eight courts at Kennedy Secondary School, for wind slats on the south court, and then two tennis ball throwing machines and two rolling carts. So, thank you for the large justus. Wonderful. We will continue our meeting with some reports and start with our Activities Director Derek Abrams to give the winter-spring sports update.
All right, good evening. Just go through this very quickly, and if you have any questions on, especially anything from the winter, please let me know. Participation, you have the numbers there. Very pleased with the numbers that we have. We had about 31 more students out for winter activities than we did the previous year. And considering at least nine through 12, we have the smallest number of kids we probably have ever had in a school. We're very pleased to see that. Most of them went up a little bit, as you can see there. So, overall, very, very pleased with our winter. We've had a lot of success, and even though I know any coach that didn't make the state tournament would be probably disappointed in how the season ended, where we went from November to here in all of our sports, I was very, very pleased. The next thing on there I have is sportsmanship awards, and that went to our girls Nordic ski as well as our boys basketball this year. And again, and I've said this here before, but I like to update how many we've had. We've had 81 sportsmanship awards since joining the CLC. That's good enough for second, as we stand right now. Brainerd has 85. But you also have to understand Brainerd's been in it since 1997. We didn't join until 2005. So the fact that we have had, that we're second, we have eight less years, is pretty good. Today, when I was looking at it and I was going back through the years, I did notice a couple things. One, volleyball, they've had it every single year except for 2006, 2007, our second year in the league. Swimming has had it every year except for 2014, 2050. And, you know, a lot of times we'll look at that and you think sportsmanship, well, that goes to the team, they're real nice, good to play against, didn't do very well. If you look, I'll use boys basketball, which we just won it. The two teams that split it this year were Wilmer and Fergus Falls, two top teams in the CLC. So the coaches do take it seriously, we talk about it often. Very pleased with that, and across the board. If you looked at the chart since 2005, almost every single activity or sport has received it in many multiple times. So very pleased with the success we've had on the court as well as off. I will say academically too, we are usually close to the top in the received academic awards. Again, boys basketball did win the section academically as well. So, again, success everywhere. All right, so the all-conference as well for you there, so you can see that, and state tournament participants, which we have acknowledged many of them. A couple don't have them in there, that's because they haven't been published yet. For example, wrestling, that just went out to the coaches here about a week ago, so they haven't published all the all-conference and the voting and the, as well as the sportsmanship in there yet. So, that's why a couple of them are blank, but again, very pleased, the growth that we've had, very positive winter season across the board. Spring is starting off, well, besides all the snow, our numbers are good, very pleased with the response that we've gotten so far for our winter sports, and hopefully we're supposed to start next week, I don't know if that's gonna happen with baseball and softball, but the numbers are there, and very pleased with that. Any questions?
So how does a team get a sportsmanship award?
It is voted on by all the coaches. Now, they either have, every sport either has an in-person meeting with all the head coaches or an online meeting, or email meeting, and then they all vote for a team for sportsmanship. And it's based on, obviously, the athletes themselves, how they conducted themselves on the court. Also, you know, it could be the fans. If you have a bad experience at a place, you go there and the fans are terrible, a terrible host, and everything else, probably not gonna vote for them for sportsmanship at all, it kinda sticks in your head. So, the criteria is just basically who, you know, displayed the best sportsmanship as an entire program.
So is it one per sport?
One per sport, yep. And sometimes it's, if they have a tie, they'll give it to both, they don't break it down. It's one of those awards that they feel, you know, both teams tied, so we're gonna give it to both.
And you can't vote for your own team?
Right.
It's gotta be voting for other teams.
Yeah, you vote for other teams.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Abrams? Abrams, where'd I come off of that? Sorry Derek.
That's all right.
Okay, all right. Next report then would be from Scott Colbeck.
I brought your own pizza, huh?
Yeah, it's a little visual. Don't get ahead of myself. Okay, so there are three items I wanted to speak to you about this evening. First was a recent event we had at McKinley School, it was our kindergarten registration evening, and we had a fantastic turnout. In the 12 years that I've been a part of the kindergarten registration evening, we've not had a year where we've had as many incoming kindergarteners show up. So, we did have 151 students in attendance that evening. Now, we've kept enough data over the years to project out, on average, we have about 65% of our incoming class show up to the night of kindergarten registration. And so, doing the math, 151 kids, that would be 65% of 232. We've not seen 232 kindergarten students, and I'm not saying that's what we're going to see. So, I don't know if this is just, you know, is this truly a larger group than we're accustomed to seeing? Or is this just a group that, you know, has more families decide to show up to the night of kindergarten registration? Time will tell, but you can be sure that we'll be keeping a very, very close eye on this number. You know, we do have nine sections of kindergarten this year, and in my 12 years, we've had anywhere from six sections to nine sections. I think only two of those 12 years, we've had nine sections, and this year is one of those. So, probably safe to say that with the resignation of one of our kindergarten teachers, probably safe to say that we'll be replacing her position to have nine again, but, you know, if you do the math, we're gonna have to really, really keep an eye on a possible 10th section. But, of course, we'll keep you very informed on that. I'd just like to thank all of our McKinley staff for being a part of that evening. It's pretty impressive, we pull everybody up front, line 'em up, and after the kindergarten students, well, we introduce everybody first, and it's a long line of folks, and then we send our kindergarteners out with a kindergarten teacher, and then we spend some time with the parents, just giving them some information. So, one of the things parents did that night was hand in if they wanted to register their child for RightStart, which is gonna be on June 5 and 6. And our RightStart sessions are already sitting at 44, 48, and 25, which is 117. So 117 kids have registered for RightStart, we're gonna have to keep an eye on those numbers as well, because generally we have two RightStart teachers, and we may need to consider adding a third person for those two days. So just, that was a little bit about kindergarten registration, I wanted to share that with you. Second thing I wanted to visit with you about is an upcoming PTO fundraiser, and I know Mrs. Rund might, I don't know Mrs. Rund, if you might visit about this a little bit tonight, if this was part of your report. If it is, just fill in the blanks here, but our PTO this year is doing two large fundraisers. In the past, they've done one, it was kinda one of those catalog type fundraisers. But this year, they wanted to try something called the Booster-Thon, and they wanted to do the Booster-Thon in the spring and compare to see the results of the fundraiser, and then maybe going forward, maybe just choose one of the two. But the Booster-Thon basically starts with a pep rally on April 3, and it's an eight-day fundraiser, and it ends with a culminating activity of a fun run where all of our kids in grades K through four are gonna be bussed over to our football field, and they're going to run on a course that's set up by this group. There are some employees that come, in fact, these employees from Booster-Thon are gonna be with us every day during the eight-day duration of the fundraising event. And how you raise money for that is, you can sponsor a child, hey, I'm gonna give you $1 per lap. So when you get to the culminating activity on April 12, if you run 35 laps, I'm gonna give you $35. One lap is approximately 1/16 of a mile, so, you know, 32 laps would be two miles. And they say that's a typical day for a student, is to run somewhere around 30 to 35 laps. I've been impressed, we've been impressed with this group, they're detail-oriented, they've met with Mrs. Rund and myself and our PTO leadership. Every student is gonna have a shirt, at no cost to the student. When they run a lap, they stop and a volunteer will put a little checkmark in one of the boxes that's on the back of their shirt. There's gonna be a DJ at the event, so they get the kids pretty pumped up, there's a tunnel that they run through, it's very well done. In fact, just before I came to the meeting tonight, I went to Booster-Thon.com and watched a two-minute promo video, learned a lot from that video as well. So we're looking forward to this fundraiser. Again, it starts on April 3 with a pep rally, then for six consecutive school days, each classroom gets a three-minute visit by a Booster-Thon employee, and then there's a series of six videos that the teacher shows to their students each day. Each video is a character trait, a positive character trait, so very well done, we're very excited about this, very interested to see, I guess, what the bottom line will be with the fundraiser. And then the last thing I wanted to just mention to you, as you know, the third quarter of school ended on Thursday of last week, and so today was the first day of the fourth quarter. At the end of each quarter, I make classroom visits at Adams School, and we give kids an attendance charm if they had perfect attendance, or if they missed one or two days of school during that quarter. If you can come to school for one quarter and miss only two days or less, that's 95% attendance. So I just wanted to show you, many students today received an attendance charm like this, this is kind of a big deal to a first grader or a second grader. You can earn up to four attendance charms with the four quarters of school, and then the kids like to put those attendance charms on their Jaws necklace, you see all the little tennis shoes there, color coordinated. So that's very motivating to some kids, and so it's just fun, and it's a nice way for me to get into every single classroom, at least four times a year. And then we have a rule, because not everybody receives an attendance charm, so we always have a special message for those that didn't receive us an attendance charm, and it goes like this, it says, "Don't let this ruin your day, it's not worth it, there's no pouting and no crying, Mr. Colbeck will be back again with attendance charms." So if you're here in school today, which was my message, you're off to a perfect start, and you have perfect attendance so far in fourth quarter. And then the last thing I do, this is this year's visual, in the past, it has been a Kit Kat, as you know, a Kit Kat has four nice pieces that you can break off, and so this year, the visual was, and I won't mention this business because I don't want free pizza for a year if I did mention the business, but they were nice enough to give me a pizza box, and so this was the visual that we showed. At the end of the first quarter of school, we likened it to a pizza that is cut into quarters, and so at the end of the first quarter of school, one of our pieces was done, we were one-fourth done with the school year, and we had three left. So after the second quarter, of course, I covered up this one, today, both of these were covered up, and we talked about how we have one quarter of school left, so this was just kind of a good visual for them. And then, of course, the classroom that I was in, there's a little boy in one of our classrooms, and his parents own this business, and so he thought it was pretty cool that I had his pizza box, so. So that's just a little glimpse into a few minutes in each classroom at Adams School today, so. Any questions from the board?
The fundraiser then is gonna be what grades? K through?
K through four, yeah. So, our PTO has done some research with this and wanted to give it a try, and we found that our staff, our staff wanna be really supportive of the PTO, because they see how supportive our PTO is of our schools and our classrooms and our students.
You said it's April 16?
April 12, which is a Thursday, and there will be notes, letters going home with all of the students, either today or tomorrow, giving parents a heads-up about the Booster-Thon, and parents are invited to attend the event on our artificial turf football field on April 12. We have two classrooms coming over to do their run at 9:15, another two classrooms at 10:15, and then a classroom at 12:15.
Are they gonna need volunteers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Reach out to Kelsey?
You could reach out to our PTO president, Kelsey.
What time is the pep rally on the 3rd?
It's different at each school, so these two employees from Booster-Thon are gonna hit all three elementary schools, and then even at the elementary schools, there's more than one pep rally, because we're just kinda making it a little smaller, so we're just kinda cutting the group kind of in half. So off the top of my head, I'm not exactly sure of the times, but our staff are aware of these.
You can get that to me and I'll send out for, if any school board members would like to go to either one of the 3rd or the 12th.
Cool. How did you fit everybody in the gym? 150 families.
Yeah, good question.
Squishy?
Yeah, squishy, and a lot of folks were standing. The ones that get there early and sit, we ask them to, you know, plop their kindergartner on their lap, so that we don't use up those chairs, and, yeah, it was, every year, you know, this year I was looking at the group saying, am I just caught off-guard every year by how many people show up? But no, it was truly a larger, larger group this year.
There was probably 60 people standing, and one of the parents shared that this was one of the largest birth rates at the hospital, that's set the record for recent years here, so not surprising that we have the numbers, so that's pretty exciting.
Yeah, that is. Yeah, that'll be fun to track, see how we do there, huh? All right, any other questions for the principal? Thank you, Ms. Colbeck. And now we'll have our report from Mrs. Candy Rund, the Cleveland Elementary Principal.
Good evening. Hello there. Last week, well, first of all, I do wanna echo this message from Mr. Colbeck, we are really excited that our honor PTO is interested in trying something new, it's all about activity and getting kids moving and involved, and the PTO has really done a fabulous job of working with the teachers and brainstorming ideas. I know one of the, one of their intentions is in doing this fundraiser at this time of the year, is to really know what their funding is, so that they can do some planning for next year, because it's really nice to be able to reach out and make some contacts with organizations that come in for presentations, such as the Minnesota Science Museum or Klein Theater. If we can get in touch with them and get on their schedule ahead of everybody else, we get our pick-up dates and when we can invite them into our schools, as opposed to waiting and finding out what dates they have remaining available. So, the PTO is really thinking ahead and doing some of that pre-planning as well, so we really appreciate their efforts. Last week, the families of third and fourth graders received a mailing that included information regarding the Prairie Science Class option for their consideration. With that information, kinda just giving an overview of Prairie Science Class, they also received a letter or a form, a preference form, for them to read through kinda what is all involved for their child if they choose this option, and indicate their preference on whether they would like their child to participate, or no thank you, or it doesn't matter, and we can help them make that decision. We really look for all of the parents to respond, so that we do know their preference, and that really helps us in our planning as we are developing class sections for next year. We are glad that we can continue to offer and guarantee one year of that Prairie Science Class experience, either during their fourth grade year or their fifth grade year, so we really like to accommodate their wishes, make it fair for all students, and make sure that each student who wants to participate in that option gets at least one year of that experience. So, we're looking for parents of current third and fourth graders to complete that form and return it to the Cleveland office by Friday, April 6. MCA testing at Cleveland will begin the second week in April, which is just right around the corner now. For third graders, this is their first experience in taking the MCA test, and so their teachers are scheduling some times in the computer lab to introduce them to test items, samplers, some of the tools that are available to students as they're taking the MCA test, so that when the day of testing comes, those students are prepared and kind of can anticipate what they're gonna see on the screen, and what tools would be helpful, and which ones they certainly aren't obligated to use in completing that test. So, teachers are really cognizant of the fact that these kids are young, and for some it'll be their first go at this, and are making plans to prepare them for that as well. We're going to do all of our MCA testing in the two computer labs. We feel very fortunate to have two wired computer labs, and it really is the teacher's preference for students to leave their classroom, walk into a lab where they have a little extra space, larger screens, everything's wired and set up for the students to do their testing when they arrive there, so much preferred and much appreciated by all. Each of the sections of students is scheduled for two sessions, two sessions for reading and two sessions for math on consecutive school days, so it's a shorter duration on each of those days, which is manageable for this age of student. And then lastly, I just wanted to share with you, I did have a parent reach out to me last week, just to inquire, how do we conduct our safety drills at the elementary level? And we had a nice visit about that, and at the elementary level, we do want to not cause alarm, undue alarm for students, so Mr. Colbeck and I jump on the intercom and let students and staff know that at this time, we're going to practice a safety drill, and we tell them about the safety drill and some of the things that we need to keep in mind during the safety drill, that they need to have their voices quiet, listen carefully to their teacher's instructions, cooperate, and the like, and then we say that the drill will begin at this time, and we conduct our safety drill, and afterwards, we jump back on the intercom and let everybody know the drill has been completed and thank them for their cooperation. So it's really, we train kids in on those procedures, talk them through why we're doing it, what we're doing and what we expect, and then receive some feedback from teachers afterwards as well. So, we do have parents inquiring and reaching out, some ask their child at home, you know, have you practiced this safety drill at school, and what did you think about it? So, the parents are appreciative of that and having these important conversations at home as well. And that's what I have to add.
All right. Any questions for Principal Rund?
Just on the MCA testing, do you know, are we gonna get back the results sooner? Do you know, they talked about, this department talked about trying to get back the results sooner to?
We know the results, because they're online, almost right away, but what they do is they have to go and vet them, they have to make sure that everything is correct, and it'll be the end of August.
Yes, again.
Yeah, till they're finalized, and then we get a chance to go in and make any corrections and all of those types of things, but for the most part, a lot of our teachers will know where their kids are at fairly soon, but it's not official.
Do they change much usually between?
I'll have to ask Carrie that, Carrie Thompson, our curriculum person.
All right. Anything else? Thank you. Okay. And now, a report from our secondary principal, Mr. Dean Monkey.
Hello?
Hey, good evening, everybody. I just got a couple items for you here tonight. This morning, about 9:45 a.m., whether it was snowing or not, we had four coach buses pull out for New York. So our music students were off, and haven't heard exactly where they're located right about now, but 20 hours later, they're supposed to arrive in New York City. So, special thanks goes out to the music directors and the other chaperones that were willing to go along for the trip. And you took a look at the itinerary, it looks like it's just gonna be a fantastic experience for all of those students. And of course, we purposely scheduled that for a week in which we only had two days of school. So, that works out great too, that we were able to pull that all off, and they're only missing two days of school for us. So, the other thing that we're working on right now, of course, is the completion of our middle school and high school schedule for next year. And we've gotten to the point now where we've at least preliminary determined our middle school schedule, and found a place for everybody, and determined how much additional help we'll need in 7th and 8th grade, both in our core classes and our related arts classes as well. And as we've mapped this out and even gotten down to the details of finding rooms, we're finding that we do fit. I might have to have a little bit of a conversation with our family and consumer science teachers to kinda use one of their additional rooms for a couple hours, but I'm seeing that no additional students will need to go over to the Roosevelt Building, other than what we've used in the past, for next year, so it was nice to go through that exercise and just kinda make sure that we had room for all the additions that we're adding there. And because of that, we presently have some positions that are posted out there, so a good chance for me to get up in front of you folks in the public and advertise a little bit here. We have numerous elementary positions available right now, including ones in 5th and 6th grade for next year. We have a secondary English position, we have part-time middle school math, part-time middle school science, physical education, health and adaptive FIA Ed, two positions there. We have two positions in music and a part-time art teacher as well at the secondary level. So, all of those are presently out and have been posted, and we're just taking advantage of the chance to get those out early, so that we can kind of get in front of the rush out there and hopefully get some of the great candidates to apply for our school district, which we have had in the past. Also, I just wanted to make mention that at this time of the school year, I know that Mr. Tilke best described it today as the next 40 days. Forty days and forty nights are coming up, because after this break, we have no more breaks, before now and basically the end of the school year. So on the So on the one hand, it's fantastic because it really is an educational push to that end of the year and looking to complete all of our testing and everything else, but it's a grind as well, both for students, staff, parents, everybody along the line. Hopefully, we're going to get some better weather to help. But between Mr. Abrams and the Activities Office, Mr. Shane Tilke in the High School Office, Mr. Brad Strand in the Middle School Office, Mr. John Steinbrenner in the Middle School Office, and Mr. Ryan Johnson in the IQ Office, along with Mrs. Kristen Tool at the ALC, these people are absolutely fantastic, and they deal with whatever issues come their way, and I am just so appreciative of that whole group that we have managed to put together that I want to just go out publicly and thank them for a tremendous job and looking forward to the spring of the year. So with that, I'll see if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Superintendent Ask?
Yes, and for the work session, Mr. Abrams, all the principals, they're staying for more updates and forecasts of things to come here as we plan for next year. A few things that I have, working with the legislature, and it seems like that's all we're doing lately, is reading and keeping up to date. See if you're doing, as I'm on the MRA board and heard lots of reports, but school safety is clearly the number one topic down for legislature right now. Believe that we're going to see some more dollars per student, possibly seventeen, eighteen dollars a pupil unit, to be flexible with our needs, because our needs are different than other districts, because we have a school resource officer, for example, but some schools might need an SRO, some might need cameras, secured entries, those types of things, so they're, they're able to be flexible with them. The other item is the Teacher Retirement Association. Right now, it is not fully funded the way it should be, so there is going to be a fix, and it seems like every education organization is on board with this. A big part of it is those who have already tired or retired and drawing their COLA, cost of living adjustment, will go from two percent to one percent for five years and then creep up a tenth of a percent for the next five years. And the employer side will go up about a percent and a half, and then the employee way out in 2023 would go up about a quarter. So all of those things together will help fully fund, and a few good years with the market would also be really nice, too, to help fund, fund TRA. Also on the agenda is cross subsidy. The governor has seventeen million towards a $700 million problem. Cross subsidy is, the definition of this is, we are spending a number of dollars out of our general fund to fund special education. And, and, and we need, we have to, we want to provide the special education funding that is needed for teachers, for parents, for all the different things that we need for special education. The issue is the federal government has not lived up to their promise of forty percent funding. They've never been over nineteen percent ever, and, and so that's a big hole. And, and then also with our state legislature, because the federal government isn't lifting, filling, providing the needs to special ed, we look to the state, and, and it's on their radar, and I think a lot of this is a forecast for things to come. Next year is more of a funding year, whereas this year's more of a bonding year. So they'll, so we look like we're kind of getting our foot in the door on cross subsidy, and hopefully they'll take some action. Also want to report that the sixth grade state capital trip is back on. The, I will have more information on the funding for that, but I was able to make one phone call and get $4,000. That was nice, which will come from a grant to help finish off the fundraising the sixth graders have been doing. So students will be able to travel on a coach bus at no cost. They will have to provide meals for themselves. So other than that, Missy, you're going along? I think I'm going along, so it should be a good day to return, especially when the capitol's been remodeled like it has. ESSA is, is starting to come to light, what's going to happen to districts. MRA had a notice out today that there's going to be a five-star rating system, and so I think Florida has a grading system, and it looks like we're going to the stars. So the number of stars you have will be how well you do on reading and math proficiency, growth rates in, in academics, closing achievement gaps, and graduation rates. Those are some of the things that, that will be looked at. Very, very similar to World's Best Workforce, and even with all the waivers that Minnesota has done from No Child Left Behind, it's very closely aligned with what we're going to be doing in ESSA. So that, that's my world right now.
All right. Any questions for the superintendent? All right, very good. We'll move on to our general consent items, which will include consideration for approval of the minutes from our last regular school board meeting on March 12th, and then quite a bit of personnel.
You know, there are. We have special ed parents, it's, it's, we will just continue, there's, there seems to be a rotation, you know, through whether we have need or replaces someone, so Kate Adams is being hired, Ren Funk will be a mechanical worker, so he's replacing, that's Miles Anderson's position. Cody Ward and Brad Moxness will be seasonal ground workers, hopefully they'll start soon. Yvonne Wegshite is a new custodian that is, is replacing a retired, and then Jean Larrabee, elementary teacher, she's been in, in RTI-like position at halftime, so she is retiring at the end of the year. And then Tom Uvis, our head boys swimming and diving coach for close to forty years, I think it is, so he's, it's over forty years, so wow. So congratulations to him on his retirement. So I would recommend approval of these items.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the general consent items?
Some move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on those items? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. And we'll move on to new business. So the first item of our new business would be to look for a motion to accept roofing bid for the Kennedy Secondary School. And in our preliminary information, we received the bid that was favored by the school, but all the numbers are there, and so as you make your motion for acceptance, please indicate which, which company you are endorsing. So is there a motion to accept the roof bids?
Yes.
All right. What would you move there?
I'd move that we accept this recommended bid.
From Budweiler's Roofing?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So that is Missy's motion. Is there a second?
With alternates in there, too, right?
Mark, why don't you go through?
Yeah, well, I'll take the second, then we'll have explanation.
All right. I'll second it, yep.
All right, go ahead, Mark.
All right, just to refresh the board and the community here, we did open up bids in December and found them not to be in the best interest of the school district, so we reformulated and did a second round of bids that were due on March 20th. We received three bids that are showing up there, and we have Budweiler's at $130,002.50, Herzog's at $224,250, and A&R Roofing out of Fargo at $254,400. We have two roofs at this building, at the Kennedy Building, that were part of the base bid. We had an alternate to do the Roosevelt roof over there that is on the, well, it's school of choice now, but it was the old choir room back in the day, choir band room. And, and then we also had an alternate for a thirty-year option for a warranty rather than the base twenty-year. And that we found to be the, what caused the most spread between the bids. Most of the bids were very close, but Budweiler's was the, by far, the lowest bid. They've done work with us in the past, the latest being the roof over at our votational building. And so I would recommend we go with Budweiler's. They've met all of the criteria, and we've had good work with them.
It's over a hundred thousand dollar difference, like why?
All of it is in the warranty.
Warranty.
Going, going from Budweiler's, for example, was $22,000 to extend that warranty ten years, whereas Herzog's, it was like $110,000.
Wow.
And that, that comes from their manufacturer. So it's all really what their manufacturer of the materials that they're supplying is willing to commit to.
Mark, someone in the audience might ask, why does KSS need a new roof? We just remodeled this place in 2010.
Correct. Well, we didn't do all of the roofs on this building, we did most of them. We, we in fact have one large area left to do that's over the pool area, but this helps finish up the project, and we didn't want to replace them at the time because they still had some life in them. And here we are, ten years later, nine years later, we're, we're just now replacing them.
And is this a product we've had before? Is this that skin they put on, or something different?
Well, we've switched away from that. This is replacing what we call the ballasted membrane, which is a piece of rubber that's attached and then weighted down with rock. These are some of the last of those roofs, and what we've been doing is going with a more standard adhered roof. It's, it's just rubber membrane that is put down and glued down and so forth on the roofs.
Okay.
So we get rid of all that rock and all that load that's on the roof.
But it's different than Adams' project where it was more of a coating.
That is correct. Adams in Cleveland, you remember, we did a coating over the adhered roof.
Okay.
And to extend their life. So whereas, whereas this is removing the actual gravel lets up there and then replacing the rubber and putting new in and doing any kind of repairs to the insulation that we need to.
All righty. So now, does that make it pretty clear? Anybody have any other questions or comments?
All in favor of approving Budweiler's for the roof bid for Kennedy Secondary School at a rate of $130,000, $250,000, I mean, $130,000, yeah, $250,000, whatever. Okay, say, whatever's written on your sheet. Should add more caffeine. All in favor of accepting the bid, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, very good. The next item is a resolution on the retirement of Jean Larrabee, whereas Jean Larrabee began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in August 1975, whereas Jean has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past forty-three years, whereas Jean has done an excellent job as an elementary teacher in the district and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Jean Larrabee for her forty-three years of dedicated service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer a resolution and move for its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take a roll?
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke, yes. Steve Igasoff?
Yes.
Natalie Kleinsen?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
All right, very good. And our next item of business then is a motion to revise the school calendar for 2018, 2019. This is a calendar we just approved at the last meeting, there's one adjustment for spring parent-teacher conferences. So is there a motion to move the conferences from the first week of March to the end of February to avoid conflicts with sporting events?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other commentary?
I can, if you look at the screen here, where it was March 4th and March 7th, and we know that there will be, or we're, it's a highly likely event that there'll be a number of people that want to attend different scheduled playoff games, section games, so by moving it to the 25th, 25th and 28th, we avoid those conflicts. There'll be section games on the 26th, and then also on, must be March 2nd is when we'll have, so we'll, by doing this, we won't have to rearrange, we'll have everybody here, so it's all about making sure staff are at the parent-teacher conferences, so we don't have to reschedule things, so.
All right. Any questions or any other discussion? All in favor of approving that revision, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, and we have another revision proposal as well. Will someone make a motion to switch K-12 Science to the 2021 school year and then put technology replacement in FACS to the 2019, 2020 year? Would someone move to change that review cycle?
I move that we change that review cycle.
All right, is there a second? Okay. And discussion on this item?
I will explain why. So these two items right here, the ones we were talking about, technology replacement and FACS and, and science, Carrie Thompson, our curriculum coordinator, said the, the science standards are going at a snail's pace, they will not be ready for next year. So it makes a lot of sense to move that out of year, out one year, so then when, when the science curriculum is looking at purchasing new textbooks or, or online materials, whatever the case may be, they will then have the up-to-date standards. This also is very pertinent because the technology replacement moves a year earlier, where we are looking at replacements for projectors to more of a TV monitor and presentation-type thing, and, and it'll be, yeah, so the FACS will have some, a smaller component, it's a smaller department, it's not like buying, buying a reading series or a math series or even a science series, so those two complement each other very nicely, so we'll have a nice influx of technology next year, we'll purchase for the following, and then science will be on board, ready to go to look at their new standards and, and buy their textbook, textbooks the following year.
All right. Any other comments, questions on making that change? All in favor of approving the revision to the curriculum review cycle, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. We have a work session tonight for the board where the principals will stick around, talk about how this year's winding down and what to look forward for next year. We are going to have a update on the Heritage Building for the, our early education students and Activities Director Report, and then, I said, one of the principals. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.
What I'd like to do is just...